Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's common council meeting. Roll call, please.
Fire?
Here.
Rachel?
Here.
Rosenbisch?
Here.
Bargander?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Witzel?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Sparrows?
Here.
Budke?
Here.
And Hennler.
Here. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with looking in justice for all. All right. Item C, public hearing, special assessment, including mill in place, project 312, 216, for the following streets: 13th Street, Adams Avenue to Locust Avenue, Locust Avenue, 13th Street, 14th Street, 25th Street, Felker Avenue to Butternut Parkway, 4th Street, Large Avenue to Mulberry Avenue, Mulberry Avenue, 4th Street to Cul-de-sac North, Alley Central and Maple to Cleveland and Blodgett, Alley Central and Maple to Daggie and Edison, Apple Avenue, Daggie Street to Cleveland Street, Cleveland Street, Apple Avenue to Palmetto Avenue, 26th Street, Felker Avenue to Washington Avenue, Downwind Drive, Air Park Road to Cul-de-sac North, Fairview Drive, Schmidt Avenue to Cul-de-sac West, Dume Avenue, Blodgett Street, Fillmore Street, and Schmidt Avenue, 14th Street to 17th Street. This item does require a public hearing. At this time, I will open up the floor to members of the public that would like to address the council regarding these special assessments. First call, anyone from the public wish to address the council? Second call, anyone from the public wish to address the council? Final call, anyone from the public wish to address the council regarding this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. We'll move on to the next public hearing. Item D, adopting an amendment to the future land use map in the city of Marshfield, 2017 to 2037 comprehensive plan. The area proposed to change includes most of the Daniels addition subdivision located to the west of Lincoln Avenue and 4th Street intersection. This item does require a public hearing. At this time, I will open up the floor to members of the public who would like to address the council regarding this amendment. Second call, anyone from the public wish to address the council? Ing, can you check that feedback? What that is? And final call, third call, anyone wishing to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing and we'll go to item E. A third public hearing, adopting amendment to the future land use map in the city of Marshfield, 2017 to 2037 comprehensive plan. The area proposed to be changed is located on Peach Avenue between East Side Circle Drive and East 25th Street. This item as well, it requires a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to address the council regarding this amendment? Second call, anyone from the public wish to address the council regarding this amendment? Final call, anyone wish to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to item F, public comment. This time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council first stating their name and address. Council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? All right. Seeing no one, we will go on to item G. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 26, 2020 regular meeting, the May 28, 2020 special meeting, and the June 1, 2020 special meeting? Motion by Mr. Budke is second by Mr. Peschoni. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Rosenbisch?
Yeah.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Hennler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item H, staff updates. Steve, some staff updates.
Thank you. I have three this evening. The first one is interesting because at the time that COVID-19 broke, we were really trying to crank up in terms of the 2020 census project, trying to work locally here to get everybody in Marshfield counted. And of course, COVID-19 kind of changed the world, as we know. But efforts have been going on. I want to give a special thanks to Tom Laux, our communications director, who's done a wonderful job of using all of our platforms to get the word out about the census and encourage people to fill the form out and submit it. I also want to thank our partners who've been part of this, who have worked to get the word out through their newsletters and their other opportunities that they have to encourage people to participate. And I have good news today. The Census Bureau has a website that updates daily the participation that they're getting. I don't know how they calculate this, but nationally, 60.8% it's believed have filled out the census form so far. Wisconsin is well above that at 67.9%, but the city of Marshfield is at 77.3% response rate. Not only does that greatly exceed the national and also exceed Wisconsin, but it exceeds all of our neighbors, Wisconsin Rapids, Stevens Point, and Wasoc by several points. So we don't want to rest on our laurels. If we have 77.3% response rate, that still means there's roughly 23% to be counted. And I want to use this opportunity to encourage everybody, even now, to look back at the form, contact the Census Bureau if you need information, but please fill that out. Starting in August, they'll step up to the next phase while they'll actually have census takers out going to homes that they believe have not responded. But we want to get everyone counted. It helps for a lot of reasons, so please participate. Secondly, at the last council meeting, the council voted to have effectively most of these city facilities and buildings reopened as of June 1st and asked me to come back with a report. The report is that that happened and things are really going relatively well. I've been told by a couple of department heads that there might be an issue here or there with somebody having a concern about restrictions, you know, when they're in the building as far as what the expectations are. I know that Lori had told me at the library that there are some things people are expected to do when their library patrons coming to visit. And for the most part, they've been received very well. So I think, all things considered, it's gone very nicely and it's good to have those facilities up and running again. And then finally, number three, speaking of the library, it is my pleasure to introduce Jill Porter. We were sad to see Lori Belashi leave us after so many years as library director, just did a marvelous job, but we're grateful to have Jill with us. I've asked her to introduce herself and say a few things about her background. Jill comes to us from Michigan. I don't know if she's a Lions fan, but I want to remind you that I came from Minnesota and you were very gentle. Bad start. You were gentle with me as a Viking fan, I think, most of you, most of you, not Tom, but most of you. And anyway, it's my pleasure to welcome and I ask you to welcome Jill as our new library director.
Thank you, Steve. A bit about my background, I've been a librarian now for over 30 years, hard to admit. But I spent the first 15 years in New York, working as a law librarian for an international law firm, and then with an international legal education provider and publisher. Past 15 years, most recently, I spent six years as the assistant director for public service at the Traverse Area District Library in Traverse City, Michigan, where we served a population of just under 100,000 in the winter. And through six facilities. And I am just coming off a two-year break from working. I'm really happy to be in Marshfield and I look forward to working with all of you. Thanks.
All right. Anything further, Steve? That's really incredible about the census. That's awesome.
It's great to see you, even that far above the state.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Item I, mayor's comments. Employee recognition of William Schrader from the street department, June 27, 1995, 25 years of service. I wanted to give a brief update. I did one the other day, but there's a pretty significant change in, not change, but I guess one positive thing going on with COVID. I will email this out to everybody. I have a numbers guy, so I keep numbers on everything. And our infection rate fell below 6%. So you'll remember back in the latter part of May, I mean, sorry, the beginning of May, it was at nine, the infection rate was at 9.2%. When the stay-at-home order was lifted on May 13th, there was 291 new infections that day, out of 4,654 tests. And the infection rate at that time was 8.5%. Jump forward to now, today, there was 270 new cases out of 14,000 new tests. So that infection rate is very low, but the cumulative infection rate is 5.78%. It's a very positive thing to show that the state has done, that we've done a good job in curtailing this. So with all this good news, we still have to take this thing very seriously. So just remember, if you cough or sneeze, cover your mouth, wash your hands, wash them a lot. If you're sick, stay home. And this virus really goes after the elderly and folks with, that have medical issues. So do what you need to do to keep yourself safe, but it sure looks like some, some very positive news for it. Item J, council comments. Any, any comments from the council? Mr. Budke?
I think we all owe Ing and his staff a big thanks for Zoom and everything associated with these meetings. I think he's, and he and his staff has done an amazing job. I think they probably are working long hours, but you are much appreciated. So Ing, if you would pass that on to your staff, please.
Thank you. Any other council comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to item K, reports from commissions, boards, and committees? Any reports from commissions, boards, and committees? Seeing none, we'll go on to item L, the consent agenda. Entertainer motion to receive and place and on file approving all recommended actions in the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Wagner is our second. Second by Mr. Hennler, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Rosenbisch?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner? Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Hennler?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item N, presentation of the city's 2019 financial audit, introduced by Ron Ammon, finance director.
Thank you. Today, I have John Troutman and Stuart Randall here from Clifton and Larson Allen. They're going to present the results of the 2019 audit. So I appreciate CLA being here in person and kind of working through the logistical hoops to get it done when they weren't able to be on site nearly as much as they wanted. Also for being available during the year to bounce questions off because I have a lot of ideas and then I have to, I need a reality check now and then. So they're great to bounce ideas off of. So they'll run through a brief PowerPoint slide. You have the full audit report, then take some questions. In two weeks from now, we'll have a council meeting where I'll go through budget prep and we'll really get down in the weeds then about, you know, what it means for tax rates, you know, the budget deficit, spending plan, and those kinds of things. So without any further ado, John, I think I can bring it up here on the, on the screen. Is everybody able to see that on their share? Okay. So you can speak from here, John. It's just all the PowerPoints right across the top, whatever you want to switch to.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is John Troutman. For any new members, principal here at CLA, this is Stuart Randall, manager of your audit. And again, today's meeting is really just simply kind of an informal, put together a slideshow, but an informal discussion on your 2019 audit. So with that, you have just some information I wanted to present to you, some communication. You have all the draft documents, I believe, in your packet, or they are available to the city at this point. Those will be finalized probably tomorrow morning. So we'll get through this meeting, you'll basically approve the drafts and then the final copies will be mailed to you shortly thereafter. So again, audit is completed. There you go. Thank you, Stuart. So, so really, the begin, the, the presentation, I really want to go through some required communication. Again, this ties directly to the governance communication letter, if you're following along in that document, or if you want to reference that document. And really, what I want to talk about is our responsibility. So CLA comes in and does your audit, your external audit. And under the generally accepted auditing standards and also the governmental auditing standards, we really follow certain rules. And to begin with, really, the, the responsibility or the goal of an audit, of an external audit, is really to issue an opinion or to provide an opinion on the fairness of presentation of the financial statements. So really, what that means is the financial statements that's contained in your annual financial report, we opine on, we issue an opinion on. In that process, that's, that's the end result of an audit. In that process, we really take a look and we dive into your internal controls. So a lot of times, we talk about internal controls. We don't issue an opinion on that internal control, but in order to form our overall opinion, we have to go through all of your checkpoints, all of your cash collection points, all of your areas where your dispersments pass through your trial balance, your general ledger, and ultimately, end in your financial data, which we audit. That's kind of how that process works. In that, we take all that information we gather and we really apply the risk-based approach. So what that means is we really don't approach every audit exactly the same. Every single audit is a brand-new slate. And we assess during the interim, during the pre-planning phase, we assess the risk. Now, that risk could change. I can tell you, 2020, the risk is going to be totally different than 2019 because of the various changes that we'll talk about. But when we assess that risk, we identify then, okay, what do we want to test? What's important with the city financial statement? And then we base that on your internal control system. And we determine scopes, tests, the transactions, and so forth. And then we do that, express opinions based on those tests. So that's kind of the whole audit walkthrough, or the walkthrough of the audit process. The planning, scope, timing of the audit, again, we communicate during the audit process, fieldwork with your, with your management, with your team, that process is a two-way street. So we get information from them. We provide information on how we're going to attack that audit and assess that audit, risk assessment. Significant accounting policies, again, in your annual financial report, in your footnotes, we have note 1C, that's the main significant accounting principles and policies. And the thing I want to point out is Gatsby's statement number 84. Again, this is the fiduciary activity statement. That's a change. So what I'm pointing out here is a change from prior years. Gatsby's statement 84 became effective this particular year of 2019. And what that does is it kind of reclassifies anything that is a fiduciary activity to the city. And what that means is anything that money you hold for others outside of the city, things like property taxes, you collect property taxes, you collect special assessments, and they're, they're collected on behalf of others, a portion of that. Fines and things like that could be included in there as well. Those were reclassified into a custodial fund this year. Again, not a huge difference. They were an agency fund in the past, they're now a custodial fund. But you'll see that in the financial statements, a little bit of a difference, a little bit terminology is a little bit different, the financial statements looks a little bit different there. Management judgment and accounting estimates, again, in your financial statements, as in all financial statements, there is judgments, there's management judgments, there's management estimates. There's really four main ones. I just want to point them out as, as a kind of a part of this presentation. Useful lives of capital assets, Wisconsin retirement system, pension liability, other post-employment benefit liability, and then the allowance for doubtful account. All four of those estimates were really deemed reasonable, deemed supported. That's kind of what we look at when we look at estimates. Again, estimates aren't exact known numbers like the rest of your general ledger. Useful lives is an estimate. How long will this asset last and so forth? So again, the rest of those are based on an actuarial study, which is based on estimates, based on factors and assumption. Again, takeaways, they're reasonable and supported, and we did apply audit procedures to gather that, to obtain that assessment. Other information that's contained in the, in the audited financial statements, again, you have your basic financial statements, which you'll see when you look at, that's the main financial statements that you review. But you also have required supplementary information and supplementary information. Those are two distinct, and you'll see them in the table of contents, sections of your annual financial report. And the takeaway is there, and the communication I want to make sure you understand is that required supplementary information is, really, we don't issue an opinion on that. Audits don't issue an opinion on that. They're inside of your annual financial report, but they are based on things like information from the state and pension information and things like that. We don't issue an opinion, but we do do inquiries and evaluate the comparability to those. So there is some limited audit procedures, but no opinion. Supplementary information, again, which is a distinct, separate section, is audited, and that is part of your basic financial statements as far as the audit. So again, a clarification there just to help you understand those financial statements. Any disagreements with management? We would have to point out to you, there was nothing like that this year, which is good. Management representations, we have requested certain representations from management included in the management representation letter. That representation letter ends really effectively the audit process. So after we get all done, we issue all the drafts, we present them, you receive that today, and that is already signed. So we're, we're ready to go with the issuance tomorrow. Those representations are just that you've given us the correct information, the minutes, the GL detail, the best of your ability is correct, and it is the one you use to budget and keep track of your accounting information. Difficulties encountered in, in performing the audit, these are, you know, again, things that were required to communicate with you. We didn't have anything like that. Management was very cooperative and very helpful throughout the audit process. This year was a significant challenge. For many of you, it's, meetings look a little different this year. For the last three months, audits looked very different as well. We did a lot of the audit remote, which was challenging, but it worked out very well. We used technology and we used sharing screens and video calls and things like that, much like you did with your meetings. So we were able to obtain all the information that we needed to assess the opinion. So that's very good news there, and we certainly appreciate the cooperation from Ron and his entire team. Personnel and records were made available to us throughout that process. So thank you very much. Corrected misstatements, the other thing we have to, to really communicate here is, is any material audit adjustments that were made? We did make some audit adjustments related to taxes receivable, special assessments, and the related revenue for those things in both the general fund and TIF 4. And then we did remove duplicate recording of some sewer capital assets. So again, those are particularly negative. Those are just things we have to make care of as far as, hey, we adjusted some things during the audit process. I can say, though, that over the years, those audit adjustments are less and less and less. So again, that's a good sign. That's excellent. You know, that, that's exactly what you want, that trend. And we certainly work with you throughout the year, as, as Ron mentioned, that, and try to take care of some of that stuff. Because that's what the audit process is supposed to do, is to educate you and throughout the year, not just at one time of the year in the audit process. So you have a question, you ask us, we tell you how to do it, it avoids an audit adjustment. So that's kind of the two-way street as far as an audit process. So working very well. We certainly appreciate that. Uncorrected misstatements that were not made, there is nothing like that. So summary of the audit results, what was the bottom line? What are the results of the audit? Financial statements, received an unmodified or a clean opinion? Again, that means we had no modifications to our opinion. Your financial statements as presented are, are presented fairly and, and material to in all respects. So again, that's exactly what every external audit strives to achieve. So when you have, when you set your internal control process, when you set your budget every year, and you set your, your policies and procedures, that is your goal. That's your overall goal as a governing body, is to set that and put that in place to really achieve a clean audit. So that's very good news. Internal control over financial reporting, again, we talked a little bit about the audit process at the beginning on how that internal control really leads into the financial reporting. We did have two findings. We did have two findings that were actually repeats from prior year. Adjustments to the city's financial records was a material weakness. Anytime we make material audit adjustments, we're required to present that as a finding because your internal control didn't make them. Again, the takeaway is there is, those adjustments are reviewed both, both ways. We review, we, we present them to you, to the management, and, you know, we make sure you understand them. And then next year, we take those audit entries and we try to work on those and say, okay, what can we do to help you avoid those things? And that's, that's the track we're certainly on right now, and that's the track you're on as well. And then preparation of annual financial reports, significant deficiency, that's really related to the report itself, that you hire us as your auditor to do that. And that's very common, it's a very common finding. The takeaway is there, because it still is a finding, it's still not your internal control preparing those financial statements like some of your peers do. The takeaway is there is really this meeting and get me in front of you. That's certainly not the end-all, because, you know, again, during the whole draft review process, there's many opportunities and there is a lot of questions going back and forth, but also the governing body. I mean, if you have a question on something, and even if that's two months from now, if you're picking this up and page 50 doesn't make sense, get on the phone and talk to me. That's exactly what I'm here for, is to make you and allow you to understand your financial statement better. That process is very important. Compliance reporting over financial reporting under governmental auditing standards, again, these are, would be any kind of compliance findings, you didn't have anything like that. So that's when you look at your grants and so forth. So that's a very good news there. And then management letter recommendations, so we're kind of going on a hierarchy of findings, and management letter recommendations are really best practices. So as we're looking at all this information and opining on your financial statements, what, you know, is there anything that you could do better? Is there anything that perhaps you're doing okay, but it could be better? There's a best practice. We compare that to GFOA recommendations, Government Finance Officers Association, but also compare that to your peers and other cities of your size. What are they doing? Is there anything that maybe I want to present to you to, to basically improve? Again, not necessarily things you need to change, but things to talk about. And we have two items, credit card review. We recommend a periodic review of credit card limits on any city credit cards. And again, what that means is, you know, when we, when we look and see credit card limits that are fairly high, there's a lot of times that that's very appropriate because you need to buy things during the month. But a good sit-down as either finance or full counsel to really say, you know, is, is that what we really need? Are we only using a fraction of that credit limit? Well, the excess credit limit is a risk to the city. So again, take a look at that periodically, that could be every year, it could be every other year. That's what your peers typically do. Journal entry review, again, journal entries are one area of your internal control that you have one person or a few people that can change your general ledger. All the other areas of internal control have multi-steps and multiple people would need to be involved. Journal entries, and this is in general now, this isn't just city. All systems are like this, where journal entries allow usually one person or two people to change the accounting record. And it's documented, there's an audit trail, but journal entries are the highest risk probably of anything you have. So we test those in particular, the, the audit standards make us test those. But what we were recommending here is really to develop a formal policy to address, you know, who can do journal entries and what type of journal entries can they do? And then more importantly, who reviews those journaling? And a lot of times, you know, you have a finance director, there, there could be journal entries that no one even would understand, other than that particular individual. You have to somehow get creative in that process to allow someone else to review that. And I always point out to the number one documentation for any journal entry is the description. So if, if, you know, if you have a journal entry and you're doing XYZ as far as a purpose, and you put the description in three words, which we've seen many times in practice, I can't tell what you're doing, you can't tell what they're doing, and no one else that, kind of knows what's going on in governmental accounting could tell. But if you write a really good description, there's no doubt in my mind what you're trying to do. And then, even if you don't particularly understand it, you can look at it and say, well, that makes sense, or no, that really doesn't make sense. And that's really what I'm talking about there. So I re-recommend to do that. I can certainly share some example policies or anything like that, or perhaps discuss that further if you'd like to, because I've got a lot of, a lot of municipalities that we work with that have been doing that thing in the last year. Any questions on that before I kind of dive in just a few minutes into the, the financial information? And again, all this is in the financial statements. But again, I'll, I'll open up our questions, I'll just take a quick pause.
Any questions from the council? Doesn't appear to be. Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see your hand.
There were a number of things in here that, that, that I had questions about, and one of them was... about, and one of them was, uh, I guess, what, what did you do with TIF number four? What was the, uh, wh- wh- can you give me an example of what that was all about?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Can you give me an, uh, uh, a little more detail about what, what you did with TIF number four? There was a, there was a finding on that?
The TIF, uh, four adjustment?
Yeah, could you come to the microphone?
Sorry. Uh, the TIF four adjustments came down to, uh, various adjustments associated with the special assessments, the res- making sure that the, uh, general ledger system and the clerk system, in which, uh, the clerk system keeps track of the individual property level assessments, um, those two systems strike and sell, the GL and the clerk system, as well as also, uh, recording the subsequent year property tax receivable and defer.
Okay. Okay, and you, you did say that you could help us out with, uh, formulating a policy for the, uh, the journal entries?
Yes.
Okay, I, I would, I, I think between you and Ron, we, we, we should, uh, may, maybe have some time for the finance committee and, and see what we can do to change that, uh, set a policy that Ron can work with and, and everybody else can get along with too.
Sure, and for the management letter items, uh, they're draft right now, we do formulate a response. So for the two, you know, the credit card payable, the large, uh, credit limit he's talking about is AP has a $250,000 limit, because they do pay like the advanced disposal bill, which is 80, 90,000 a month. And so AP puts a lot of items on the cr- excuse me, on the credit card. Um, for the journal, we do have an informal process, um, right now, because we don't have, I don't think we have enough expertise like John's kind of alluding to for expertise on, to really review it, but we're really hoping actually in the new system, there's a workflow for that. So, um, some of the things we do now is like, I do not make journal entries, I request them, and my staff, you know, kind of holds my, to the, I feed to the fire that I have enough documentation, but we're hoping the new system has a workflow, like I request a journal entry, someone else reviews, and it's approved and put in. So, um, we'll respond accordingly to those, but, you know, valid recommendation.
Okay. Um, I read in the, uh, in the letter about the, uh, post-employment benefits liability, uh, can you explain what that, what, what that amounts to? Was that, is that our share of the pension that's due and payable to the state and that sort of thing?
Nope, nope, the, the two different things, uh, so, so there's two different things there.
Glad I asked.
Yep, there, there is the pension liability, which is basically, um, your share of the pension for the WRS, uh, that all of your employees participate in. Um, again, every year, the state of Wisconsin issues their audit, and that is based on a year ago, so we don't wait till fall till they issue the audit for, for this fiscal year, your, your audit would be a, a year late. We issue that, we base that on last year's, and then we roll it forward. And really what that is, is adding up all the state's investments in your pension, so the WRS investments, investments at the state level, and then comparing, okay, if the world were to end on that day, add up all the participants, what do they have? Do they have equal? Do they have less, or do they have more? If they have more, well then it's overfunded, right? Then, then your, your participants, there's, there's more money in the investment side than the participants have, then you would have an overfunding, then you'd have an asset. So in other words, the, the pension is fully funded. If you have less, so if you add up all that stuff and you have less investments, all your participants added together statewide, not just citywide, added together and you have less of that in the investments at the state level, if everyone retired all at once, there wouldn't be enough money to pay out. Now that doesn't ever happen, obviously, but from a reporting standpoint, that's how that liability or asset is valued. And, and again, the takeaways for that is, it kind, seems kind of weird, because what, if you, if you're here for a couple of years, you, you heard me talk about an asset, then it went to the liability, and now it's a liability again, perhaps it'll be an asset again. But what we're talking about here is a almost fully funded pension in the state of Wisconsin. If you zoom out 30 years or 20 years, and we look at the years we're looking at right now, it's going to be a straight line, right at 100%. Yeah, it might be 92 and 105 and 92, but that, that is not, Wisconsin is not why this standard exists. If everybody in the country was like that, we would not be talking about this. It's the other states, that when you add all that information up, all the participant data, you get a number that's nowhere near what's in the, in the investments of the pension. In other words, the pensions are much, much lower. You have an underfunded situation, sometimes as, as poorly as 40% funded, meaning at some point in time, when you get a bubble of employees in the, in the public sector at those states, they retire, there's not going to be enough money to pay out. That's why you were talking about. You don't have to worry about it, it is simply a fully funded or near fully funded pension.
Yeah, when I saw the word liability, I immediately thought we're liable for something, and that's what I, thank you for explaining it.
You bet, you bet. My, my pleasure.
Anything further from the council? No? All right, go ahead and continue.
Yep. So, so again, I won't spend a lot of time on this, this is just pulling some financial data here from your general fund. Whenever we talk about financials, we always have to start the general fund, because that's your main operating fund. So I just want to simply talk about your fund balance. Your fund balance in the general fund ended the year 12/31/19, 7,527,000. That's up from 7,177,000 a year ago at the end of 18. Um, and when we look at that number, we have to look at the breakdown. So what is that 7,500,000 made up of? Well, there's four components of fund balance, and, and two, or three components of fund balance, two non-spendable amounts. And non-spendable means they're in that seven and a half million dollars, they're in the fund balance, it's real fund balance, but you don't have access to it. So those are receivables that you expect to get in the future, but you do not have. Advances, uh, to your TID districts, so again, as you advance money during the life of the TIDS, those amounts are expected to be paid back through the life of the TID. If the TID works out, if the TID is fully funded, at the end of that TID life, you'll get every bit of that 3,400,000 dollars back. Now, if you don't, you won't get that, which is why we show that as non-spendable. So another way to look at this is 7.5 million minus 3.4 million. The other amount in there is county-held special assessments and charges, 132,000, you don't have access to those at this particular moment in time, um, but you expect to get those when they are paid. Then you, you drop down and you say, okay, the, then you have about 300,000, 299,000 of committed fund balance. That's money you have, that's money that is at your disposal, uh, that's in that 7.5 million, but you earmarked it for various projects, during the budget process, during your, your capital improvement plan, things like that, where you're saying, no, we're going to spend this 300,000 in future years for this, 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 this. There's a footnote in your financial statements that lists to the dollar of what exactly what you're going to spend that 300,000 on. And then you're left with unassigned, and that's really what we focus on, because it's the carryover from 12/31/19 into the current year we're in right now, 2020. That number's 3,611,000, up from 2,551, 50, 41,000 a year ago. And a lot of times we, we look at, oh, is that number adequate, is that number, you know, what is that number? Is it, is it good, is it bad, should it be 2 million, should it be 10 million? Well, the unassigned fund balance represents, that 3,611 represents 16% of your total general fund expenditures, while the total fund balance, the total 7.5 million represents, um, 34% of that same amount. So, so you can see, you're in that 16% range for unassigned, but then again, if you take a look at the, the maximum, the, the, the top line, if you got everything you, that's owed to you and everything was committed, you decided not to spend, you'd have 34%. The industry recommends 20 to 25%, that's kind of the, the goal to be at, you're a little less than that, um, but you're certainly, you know, in the range. And that plays into any bond rating, that's one of the things they look at, they look at a lot of things, but they do look at your fund balance. Um, but that's good. Um, again, the goal there would be to get it up towards 20, 25, um, but a lot of municipalities are in the, the 15 to 20 range as well. Questions on the general fund? Next page talks about, now, in addition to the 7.5 million, you have other governmental funds, so this is in addition to that. So you have 2.2, 2,91,000 in special revenue funds, and again, I didn't list every single one of them, you have a lot of special revenue funds, they're all in your financial statements. Um, but here I wanted to present a little bit on the same lines, while you have a very small amount, non-spendable, 3,500, you have a million 93 in restricted. Now, restricted fund balance means you have it, it is available to you, but you can't spend it. And you can't spend it because someone outside of the city has put a restriction on that. A lot of different reasons for that, grants, legal agreements, um, another one, debt, exactly. So there's many different things that would be normal, um, in, in the course of a business that would be, um, restricted. Then you have assigned, assigned is very similar to committed, except it's lesser of a formality. So it's still money you've earmarked, but you have a little bit more leeway in the standards and the reporting end, it kind of, on a sign and assign it at your, at your desire, whatever you want. Um, but it's still assigned, it's still earmarked for a particular purpose. And in a special revenue fund, you'll notice that number's pretty high. Well, a special revenue fund by nature is designed for a particular purpose, so you would almost always expect that number to be the majority of your, uh, fund balance. And you have a unassigned, which is negative, and anytime you have a deficit in a special revenue fund, we have to show it as unassigned. Uh, that's just timing things where you overspent in a particular year or a couple of years, and you're going to fund that in the future year, so you can see that 173,000. And that's aggregate, that's all of them pulled together, um, all the deficits pulled together. So you have additional 2,91,000, debt service has a deficit of 1,400,000. Again, you've, you've paid out some debt, you paid down some debt in 2019, um, as you recover that, um, through, through property taxes and so forth, um, that will, um, go back to closer to zero. So again, a lot of this stuff is timing, uh, capital project funds, total of a, a deficit of 1,795. Now, this is where all of your TIF districts are reported. So as you, as you know, TIF districts over the course of a life will have deficits, because you spend ahead of time, you do projects, you do TIF work, and then you sit back and the value of that TIF work is brought in by a tax increment, because the value of the TIF boundary is frozen, and then you get to a, assess that TIF increment as a separate pot of your property tax revenue, and that goes in to fund that information, that, that expenditure. So you can see, again, the financial statements are as of a point in time, December 31/19, and at that particular time, in some of the funds and, and a lot of the TIF districts, you've spent more cumulative than you've taken in in tax increment. Any questions on that? You have a cemetery perpetual care fund, 250,000, so add it all together, 7,68,559 in total governmental funds in the city, which you can see is very consistent with last year, 7,100,000 in 2018. Switching gears in the final slide here before we talk a, just a few seconds about the, the future as far as new pronouncements, accounting pronouncements, is rate of return. I like to talk about rate of return for utilities, and I've, I've chosen electric and water utilities, those are your regulated utilities, and, you know, again, your utilities, your business-type activities are completely different, a different set of accounting rules than what we just talked about for the last few minutes. And the general fund and the governmental funds operate by, you set your expenditure budget, you set your revenue budget, what's left, you levy that. This is different, this is where the, the user fees that are set, in this case, regulated by the regulatory body, are set up to basically fund your expenditure. So again, there's not a levy situation here. So why do, so what we do is we talk about a rate of return, and it's the same concept as any investment you would have, either in business or personal, and this is your, the city's, uh, rate of return on your investment in both the water and electric utility. And you can see there, 2019, the electric utility had a rate of return of 6.84%, then a water utility had 5.5%. And again, those, you can track, those are very consistent, uh, you can see those are all over, you know, four, or roughly 4%, 5% is really the low. And the PSC right now, the Public Service Commission, is really setting new rates, so if you were to go, let's say you're, you had a poor rate of return and you went for a full rate case, they are setting water rates at really no more than 5%. You, you're not going to find higher than 5% right now, and that, that means that's the maximum they'll call. And you get more, yes you can, you, you gotta, you gotta really make your case for that. So that's the norm. 10 years ago, the number was probably closer to 7%. So they are coming down, I've seen as low as 4%, where they won't allow municipality to go over 4%. Your water is right in there, 5.5%. Your rates are basically generating what's considered the, the adequate rate of return by the Public Service Commission. That's good. Um, electric utilities operate a little bit higher than that, simply because of the amount of infrastructure and things like that that's necessary. So you're at 6.8%, that's actually a high, uh, you were just under, uh, eight last year, that does fluctuate based on maintenance. Why is it important to have a positive rate of return in utilities? Because a utility is degrading every day. Every day that goes by, your utility is wearing out, it's kind of like a car. And when you are on that plan, when you are on that, that decline, over the course of many years, you need to start planning for replacement. Having an adequate rate of return allows you to be proactive. And municipalities and utilities that we see in, in our business that are not proact- proactive for whatever reason, perhaps they don't want to be, perhaps, perhaps they can't be, they have to borrow a large, large, large sum of money when their water plant breaks down, or their water plant doesn't, or their sewer plant doesn't meet the DNR requirement. So you're in a good position there, so that's good, that's very good. And with that, I'll turn it over to Stuart, we can talk about some new accounting.
Yeah, so, uh, this is the last slide of our formal presentation, um, just want to talk about GASB 87, similar to what John talked about earlier, uh, with GASB 84, which was a new standard in effect for 2019. GASB 87 is an upcoming new accounting standard dealing with the reporting for leases. This won't change how leases are accounted for during the budgetary process in terms of, your payments are still going to stay the same, it's primarily a financial reporting change, in which instead of reporting, um, operating and capital leases, it's much more of a short-term versus long-term component within the financial statements, but also it's going to be, uh, one change is with items that people lease from you, so for example, if you have an airplane hangar, there's going to be some different reporting requirements for that. Now, this initially was going to be in effect for 2020, but just like everything else, COVID-19 has disrupted this, and GASB has, uh, postponed implementation of this by one year, so it's now in effect for 2021. When it comes time to do implementation, we'll of course work with Ron and the city staff in order to make sure that this is, uh, implemented properly and making sure everything is reported correctly. And then the other thing is, our financial statements are reported as of 12/31/2019, as of year-end, and so anytime that there's this, um, significant event that occurs after year-end, uh, it's just, it's a requirement to disclose, because, um, these financial statements are not issued as of 12/31. And so one of the significant things is the COVID-19 pandemic, and it has obviously had an effect on your operations, um, you guys are dealing with it to the best of your ability, but there might be some unknown effect on your financials going into 2020 and beyond. So that's just something that we wanted to, um, bring out within the financial statements itself.
Yeah, the, the takeaway is there is we're, we're alerting both you and any users or stakeholders of your financial statements that, yes, everyone's aware of COVID-19, the real effect on financial statements varies. Uh, we've had some clients that said, oop, really doesn't have a huge impact, we have others that say, especially in like Wisconsin Dells, for example, area, that, that are having a massive impact on their room tax. So room tax is one of those where if you get a lot of room tax, it's going to have a pretty large effect. Now, we'll see, maybe the rest of the year it'll recover and it won't be anything to talk about. We're just alerting the, the users of your financial, but there may be some issues, and yourself included, so. Any other questions, well, just to kind of open it up for any questions in general, anything else you want us to talk about, this is your chance.
Any questions from the council? Hugh, are you up there?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, this is, that's one of the best, uh, management reports, management letters I've seen since I've been on the council, it's been a long time. So I thank you for it, I think it's a very thorough report. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Item O, second reading of ordinance number 1434, adopting an amendment to the future land use.
We need to, um, accept and place on file the report?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, yeah. Is there a motion to, uh, uh, on item in city's financial audit? I'm sorry, Ron, go ahead. Or no, we just need the motion to, okay. Is there a motion to receive, uh, accept and place on file the report motion by Mr. Handler? Is there a second by, uh, Mr. Preschley, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Mayor?
Yes.
Heschel?
Yes.
Rosen dish?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?[1775.92]
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item O, second reading of ordinance number fourteen thirty-four, adopting an amendment to the future land use map in the city of Marshfield. Twenty seventeen to twenty thirty-seven comprehensive plan. The area proposed to change includes most of the Daniels, uh, addition subdivision located to the west of Lincoln Avenue and Fourth Street intersection, presented by Bryce Hembrook, city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so yeah, this is a second reading, so I'll just briefly, um, recap the request. If you guys have questions after, um, the, or the, um, after I discuss items, uh, I can definitely try to answer as many questions as possible. Um, but as the mayor mentioned, the applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation for the Daniels addition subdivision from low-density, single-family residential to medium-density residential. I have included the map in the staff report. Uh, the subject, uh, area is located to the south of the first Presbyterian Church on the west side of the city. Recommended density for the current designation, which is low-density, single-family district, is less than, uh, five dwelling units per acre and the recommended land use is single-family residential. Uh, in comparison, the, um, recommended density for the medium-density residential district is three to ten units per acre. Um, and the recommended land uses include single-family, two-family, and townhouse, uh, residential development. So the, uh, the applicant is ultimately interested in potentially developing this area and intends to provide several different types of, uh, residential land uses. We also do want to note that since the last common council meeting, city staff has received a rezoning request for the properties proposed to change, and the item is scheduled to be reviewed at the June sixteenth planning commission meeting. Uh, the applicant originally requested to change the designation for the entire subdivision. However, planning commission and city staff both, uh, recommended a, uh, a change, um, and, uh, in this, in this change, or a different option, and this can be found on attachment one A. It is also important to note that this change does not automatically rezone any property or, uh, it, it also does not approve a proposed development at this time. Uh, this would only change the future land use map. At this time. So the staff report provides more information on the request. Uh, planning commission recommended approving this request, uh, for the area shown on attachment A of the ordinance. This is the second reading, and thus the recommended action is to approve ordinance fourteen thirty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number, uh, fourteen thirty-four? Motion by Mr. Butke. Is there a second? Uh, second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? All right. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Henler?
Yes.
Butke?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Rosen dish?
Yes.
Hae Shul?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Thank you. Item P, second reading of ordinance number fourteen thirty-five, adopting an amendment to the future land use map in the city of Marshfield, twenty seventeen, twenty thirty-seven comprehensive plan. The area proposed to be changed is located on Peach Avenue between East, East Side Circle Drive and East Twenty-Fifth Street, presented by Bryce Hembrook, city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so prior to the citywide rezoning change in two thousand thirteen, these properties were all zoned R four, low-density, single-family and two-family district, uh, which allowed for single-family and two-family residences. Um, and so the applicant was requesting, um, to change the future land use map, um, for that same location. Um, city staff, uh, recommended approving this request mainly due to the fact that this area used to be zoned for medium-density residential uses and also that there are several properties nearby that are classified as, uh, being medium-density residential in the future land use map as well. Uh, it is important to note once again that this change does not automatically rezone any property or approve a proposed development, but rather it would just change the future land use map at this time. Uh, planning commission recommended approving this request, um, as shown on attachment A of the ordinance. This is the second reading, and thus recommended action is to approve ordinance fourteen thirty-five.
Thank you, Bryce. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen thirty-five? Motion by Mr. Bargender? Is there a second? A second by, Mr. Peschel, any discussion? Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I, I objected to this at the first reading, and I'm going to object to it at the second reading. Um, the, uh, that, the character of that neighborhood is single-family resident. And I know, I know Bryce, uh, has mentioned that, uh, there, there are other areas, there are other, uh, multifamily listed in the area. He might be talking about, uh, he might be talking about the, uh, CBRFs that are in that area, uh, that were an issue many years ago. And they're still, I think they're still there. Uh, there is also, I, Bryce and I disagree about the number of lots that are available for the development in this very tiny area that they're asking to do. And actually, I, I went out there tonight before we, I came here. And although the city map, and I, I did a clip out of the city map, the city map shows like three lots on the west side. There's only one lot on the west side. There are two new houses in that, and I took pictures of them in case anybody wants to see them. So basically, we're doing this for two lots and for one person who wants to sell a lot. And basically, I think it does, I think it disturbs the character of the neighborhood. I disagree with the planning commission's, um, um, conclusion that it would not be harmful to the character of the neighborhood. And I urge my colleagues not to vote for this because I'm voting against it also.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Hae Shul?
Yes.
Rosen dish?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
No.
Whittle?
No.
Fisher?
No.
Sparrows?
No.
Butke?
No.
Henler?
Oh.
Uh, that motion fails. Uh, motion fails, uh, four to six. Item Q, second reading of ordinance number fourteen thirty-six, a request to rezone property located at thirty-two fourteen Manville Lane, parcel two five oh dash two six oh two, two five three, one zero zero two from CMU, community mixed use to NMU, neighborhood mixed use, presented by Bryce Hembrook, city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the subject property is located in the northwest part of the city and is, is located near the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Mann Road. Uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone from BMU, community mixed use, to NMU, neighborhood mixed use, and is interested in converting the former Jehovah's Witness church into a single-family residence. Um, so the subject property is located in the general commercial district in the future land use plan. Um, and the request of zoning district, NMU, neighborhood mixed use, is a district intended to permit, uh, residential development and small-scale commercial uses compatible with adjacent, uh, residential uses and neighborhood character. Uh, the subject property is located in a predominantly residential area with single-family homes directly to the northwest, which are zoned BMU, community mixed use, and southeast, zoned SR four, single-family residential, as well as a mobile home park, uh, zoned MH eight, mobile home, uh, to the north. Planning commission decided that, uh, rezoning the, rezoning to the NMU zoning district would be consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan and with the existing, uh, surrounding land uses, and thus recommended approving this request. This is the second reading, and thus the requested action is to approve ordinance number fourteen thirty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Bryce, is there a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen thirty-six? Motion by Mr. Peschel. Is there a second? A second by Mr. Whittle. All right, thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Butke?
Are they, Bryce, are they, uh, looking at tearing that down or, uh, trying to convert that to a house? Because, uh, that, that would be quite the project there, uh, the way it is as a church right now.
Yeah, so, um, he's looking to convert it, uh, the interior to a single-family residence, but, uh, no exterior work is planned. Um, so, uh, after talking with the building inspector, it doesn't sound like there's too many requirements that are going to, um, you know, require him to change it substantially.
Just as an addition, the gentleman buying this is a disabled vet. And he's, um, he does a lot of work with organs, and so this works out very good for him because there's no stairs and other things like that. So for him, this all makes very good sense. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Henler?
Yes.
Butke?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Rosen dish?
Yes.
Hae Shul?
Yes.
And Fire?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item R, request to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-four, authorizing Marshfield Utilities to select a new paying agent for its debt management, introduced by Ron Ammon, finance director.
Thank you. Um, just a real brief introduction. Um, in August of two thousand nineteen, the city, um, switched to Aylers or actually started using a paying agent in Aylers, uh, largely for the monitoring and kind of the backup. Um, Utilities is looking to switch to Aylers also as a paying agent for some slightly different reasons, but, uh, Nick goes here to present the proposal.
Um, so tonight I'm just requesting approval to allow us to switch the bond paying agent for our outstanding debt of the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and twenty eighteen water debt, um, to be transferred to bond trust services of Aylers. Um, this change will help save us nearly six thousand dollars in processing fees over the remaining terms of the bonds. Um, I guess I ask for your approval with this resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-four, and welcome any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-four? Motion by Mr. Butke and a second by Mr. Henler? Uh, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Hae Shul?
Yes.
Rosen dish?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Butke?
Yes.
Henler?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Item S, request to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty, special assessment for mill-in-place projects for twenty twenty, presented by Tom Turchi, city engineer.
All right, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash twenty, uh, is for, uh, mill-in-place for Thirteenth Street, Adams Avenue to Locust Avenue. Locust Avenue from Thirteenth to Fourteenth Street. Twenty-Fifth Street from Felker Avenue to Butternut Parkway. Fourth Street from Larch to Mulberry. Mulberry Avenue from Fourth Street to the cul-de-sac to the north. Um, alleys of, between Central Maple, Cleveland and Blodgett, and Central Maple and Daggy and Edison. Apple Avenue from Daggy Street to Cleveland Street and Cleveland Street from Apple to Palmetto. Twenty-sixth Street from Felker Avenue to Washington Avenue. Uh, Downwind Drive from Airport to the cul-de-sac north. Fairview Drive from Schmidt Avenue to the cul-de-sac west. And Hume Avenue from Blodgett Street to Fillmore. And finally, uh, Schmidt Avenue from Fourteenth Street to Seventeenth Street. I'd recommend approval of resolution twenty twenty dash twenty.
Thank you, sir. It's a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty. Motion by Mr. Fisher. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Henler?
Yes.
Butke?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Rosen dish?
Yes.
Hae Shul?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
That motion carries. Item T, request to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-one, exemption from the Wood County Library Tax, presented by Jill Porter, library director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in short, the resolution before you allows you to exempt the residents of Marshfield from the Wood County Library Tax. You are able to do so under Wisconsin statute as the amount of support the city provides to the Everett Rail Marshfield Public Library exceeds what it would provide to the Wood County Library System. For some of you who've been on board for a while, you probably see this every year. Wood County requests that we approve this at both the library board level and the city, the common council level every year. And as it's been approved by the library board, I bring it to you for approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-one? Motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mr. Hae Shul. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Hae Shul?
Yes.
Rosen dish?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Butke?
Yes.
Henler?
Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, item U, any suggested items for future agendas? Any, Mr. Whittle? Steve? I feel so happy.
Thank you, Mayor. I probably should have mentioned this during my staff updates, but just a reminder to everyone that we have a special meeting here on Thursday night. Uh, it's a CIP meeting. We'll be going through the remaining one-third of requests and then getting council direction after that in terms of what changes or adjustments you might want to see with the capital improvement program. That will then be, uh, the modifications we made at staff level. And either on June twenty-third or July fourteenth, one of the next two meetings, we'll bring that CIP back to you for final approval. Uh, the difference as to which meeting it'll be, be based upon how many changes you might make that the staff will have to, you know, tabulate and recalculate. So Thursday night at six o'clock here.
Great. Any other items for future agendas? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mrs. Sparrows, second, second by, who's that? Second by Mr. Fisher. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.